Mr. Papel, can you roll?
Lori Gwizki.
Here.
Linda Gracy.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Tom Hare.
Here.
Jennifer Hurd.
Here. Dr. Valiege.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the first thing on the agenda is consent agenda for personnel. Oh, sorry. There it is now, let's see. Hold on, I'm working on it. It's just a quick view. Yes, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through G.
I second.
Any discussion?
I was gonna ask one question. Um, D, I see there's a Robert Roll in there, but will that no longer be effective?
Correct, it's kind of more sort of like the work he did in January, maybe it said the victims on the list.
Okay, so that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Linda Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Hare.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Gwizki.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that brings us to the main reason we're here tonight, for the work session on curriculum. Okay. Nice show. So, I kind of outlined with you all in that email yesterday, a little bit of an agenda for tonight. And, so what I have for you is kind of the talking points that I sent you in the email, and then some sample course of study documents that we can look at together. Make some, you guys can make some decisions, give me some direction, a couple of talking points that I would like to, things that I'd like you to think about, and ways, a way that I think can maybe get this done a little bit more efficiently. I'm sorry I wasn't at the meeting last week, but I watched it, and so, through listening a little bit, typically this process would be a very lengthy, involved process. I have some ideas on how we can maybe do it a little bit more efficiently, and I don't think we're as far behind as maybe we feel like we are. So, we can talk about that piece when we get to it. First page in here is kind of the agenda, selecting the template, I kind of think is the first thing. The second thing here, I'm just gonna have you guys put to the side for a minute, we'll go back to that for a second, it says elementary, grade 5. This is from our website, just hold that to the side for a second. So, the next couple of things you have in your folder are six different templates that I put of ways that we can put this together. And what I did is I gave you, the first page in each one of these packets is a blank copy, so I want you to see what the document might look like with no information in it. Some things they look really good when they're blank. So then I also included a page that had it started to fill out, because some of it then gets really messy and difficult to kind of dig through. So, I'm thinking the first thing we need to do is to decide which template you might like, because the template will dictate the level of information that you would like to see in these documents. Does that make sense? So, the first one was the one actually Tom that you had shared, this single sheet labeled number one, was the very, so, that's what it would look like blank, and then on the flip side, that's where you start to see it filled out, and this, they're just random courses that were filled in here. So this would be if we were doing English Language Arts for first grade, this is how it would look if it was laid out. So in this particular document, you see the standard, you see essential questions, okay, which are the big ideas that the teachers formulate, so those essential questions come from what we're teaching in the standards. The standards part is never going to change. That is what, now, we can pick and choose, and we kind of have set, you know what I mean? The state gives us standards, and that's what we teach from, that's what we've taught from for years. As a board of education, I think you can make the decision, I guess, to remove certain standards from the curriculum. I don't know where that would be appropriate, or why we'd wanna do that, but that's up to you to make that decision. So the standards are not gonna change, the standards are coming from the state curriculum, okay? Essential questions would be developed by teachers, vocabulary, so this one has key vocabulary the teachers would tease out, what kind of vocabulary do teachers, are teachers working with? Activities that teachers would do in the classroom, and then a resources column. So you would have any links they would use, any, you know, materials, maybe what program is associated with this. So, we use the reading and writing units of study, that would probably be in the resources, and then anything else they might use to teach that standard, okay? So that's the first one. The second one is set up a little bit differently, okay? This is the only one that goes vertical, just a different way to look at it. Has the learning standard, then how it's taught, if you flip it over, materials, and then how it's assessed. So, teachers would be putting in there whether it's a performance-based assessment, whether it's an end-of-unit test, it's clear you're not getting a link to that, but you know how they're assessing. And then the teachers think about how they're going to reteach for students who don't learn. This is a little bit more in-depth for, I don't know if it's the level that you weren't, okay, to see as a document that we're putting out to everyone, doesn't really matter to me, I don't care if we want this to be documented or not. Teachers do this all the time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I know you're asking what we would, have you ever developed one of these lately? And so you know what normally would go in there, right? Because I know myself, I don't, I don't have an education, college education degree to understand what would all go in, or even what the options are. So like if I were to offer a direction, we might be missing eighty percent of what we're supposed to do. So, from my perspective, I would like to see a product, and it's my understanding we're supposed to review it and approve it, not as a board develop it. So I would think maybe you would develop it and show us, I know that these are outlines, but how would we choose an outline when we have no knowledge of what goes into it?
So I actually had a conversation with Mr. Hack last week about potentially, that was my initial thought, was you would get the document and review it, and he indicated that perhaps you all would want a little bit more input into what that document looked like to guide you, so that's why we're going in this direction.
Okay, I agree with that, but looking at a lot of different options, instead of just one, like if someone goes to the ODE and looks, there's just a basic template, it gives no detail as to what's taught within that template. I know like last year when we were in a curriculum meeting, I had asked if we, if a, if a parent or parents were moving into the district from outside of the district, looking at buying a house, having their kids maybe attend the district schools, where could they go to see the written curriculum? And at that time you said you were working on it, I don't know if you recall that. And so, then you said, and as a backup, you sent them to the ODE because that's what we follow. Okay, so there was no detail in there, and so if someone wanted to see, well, what are the details, they wouldn't have been able to find much. They could go teacher by teacher online to see what the teachers have to say, but who is instructing the teachers as to what to do, and what's the template? And so, I would think a fairly comprehensive template, I know in the last meeting, if you watched it, Assistant Superintendent Schlick said he found something from 1999, was the last time he saw. Has anyone found anything that's more recent than that? Okay, so, it looks like maybe for twenty-three years it's not been done, and so this looks like it's a major project, and, and I would think we would wanna look at a lot of our options, so I would agree with Mr. Hack, we'd wanna see what the options are.
But I think that's what this is.
That's, that's what this is.
I know, but for the board to choose what option, I think is a little line, I would think it would need to be developed and brought to the board.
I'm not sure I agree, at the end of the day, I've looked, like I'm looking at some of these, and, and it's helpful, because one of them tells me what, like, what resources and what the vocabulary is, for example, this one tells me how is it assessed? I don't know, let's figure out what it is that's important to us, and then that guides the template, and that guides what you put in it. I think it's, I mean, this stuff's pretty basic, like, we already know a lot of this stuff anyway, right? Like, we know what learning standards are, we know.
And then I guess that's, I can put together the template on how I would want it, but I don't know if it's the information that you want communicated to the public. And, just as a side note to what you said, Mr. Fishel, that's exactly what this is, this is from our website, it tells every single program and every course of study that we have. So it's not in a nice neat document yet, and it can be, I don't have a problem with that, but when I said that we were working on it, it exists. So every program that we have, that we teach, that we use, is on the website, under the curriculum department, so if a parent is moving into this district, there is a place that they can, can be directed to find programs at this point. So, we, we can pick, that's what I want you guys to do, you have to tell me what you wanna see, otherwise I'm gonna spend time, or teachers are going to spend time creating documents, and I'm gonna come back and you're gonna say, well, we want an X, Y, Z, and we don't see that. So I just need to make sure that, that when I go out and do this, and then I'm gonna tell you why, I think it's gonna be a little bit easier that we think, but.
Yeah, so normally when something's developed, at least my experience, maybe I'm not smart enough, but usually the first iteration isn't the final item. Usually it takes more than one iteration, sometimes several, and, and that's why I'm saying to, for us to give you guidance, I'm not so sure that that would be appropriate other than looking at something that you would bring, and then if there's other things that we might want, maybe we could make suggestions, but if the basic document was brought, then we could look at, I mean, looking at outlines, I just would, I wouldn't be capable of giving you a proper direction to have a full curriculum document, because I just don't have this experience nor the knowledge to do so, so I would think you would need to bring that to us.
So Dr. Malacker, these are all examples of curriculum documents, I'm assuming, out there, correct? So for other school systems, other, so.
Actually, there's one in here too, so, I mean, we could go through each one, I'll direct you to.
Do you have one that you have preference on?
Number five, well, okay, so number five is one that I actually used to create a course as a young son-state instructor, and I have had teachers work in this template already. I like it, because you think about the inputs that you're giving to kids, which means what do you give them to read, what videos, everything, what outputs do you want from them, whether it's gonna be a task, a project, that kind of thing. You talk about, you know, they put out videos and lectures, what kind of activities, so I like that one, but I don't know if it's getting to the level of information that you want. It might be that you want something more like, I'll tell you, I don't particularly care for three and four, I think they're sloppy and hard to, I think the information is not well documented, I just think they're difficult to work out. So, that's my opinion on those two. I liked the one that Tom shared, that would be number one, you know, it's very concise, and this would be, this to me is a little bit more concise even than the one that I like. This one would be, in my opinion, would be used by teachers and community. This one is probably more a community, parent outside education document, if that makes sense.
When you say.
Number one, I'm sorry, number one's probably more of a community, because I think it's pretty straightforward, like, it's very clear cut, very cut and dried. This is more of a, you're gonna see the unit as a whole, number five. And, and as a parent or as a community member, do you wanna see the unit as a whole and comprehensively look at what we do? Or do you wanna see by the strand and the, the, the way the state kind of lays out the standards, do you wanna see it that way?
This almost follows the curriculum or the standards books that they, I don't know if they have those anymore.
So this again, like you could say, oh, you know, how are they teaching reading informational tasks? And you could go to this document, you could find that, and you would say, oh, this is what, the materials that Riverside uses, these are the activities they do, because I think those are all columns on here, you know, this is the vocabulary they focus on. You could use number one to do that. If you wanna know how does Riverside teach, and I have a thinking in terms of modules, you know what I mean, kind of a, more of a scope and sequence, more comprehensive, you would get the standards that fall into this unit, but you're going to see, this is gonna be maybe more of, this is what we do in two months, because this is the, this is our life cycles unit, if it was a science unit, okay? Or this is our geometry unit, and this is how, and actually, I think it's a sixth-grade unit that I attached, because a sixth-grade teen actually worked through this already, and looked at how, so that was the document that I, so it just depends on how you want the information communicated.
We could do even a combination, like this goes on the top, and then this stuff follows in and does it in more detail, and once these are done, then, then it's like, jeez, we're golden, because now all you have to do is update them, right? Now you have things the community can use, you have things that the teachers can use, and they can update these documents any one time.
I think that would be the, you know, ideally, it would be something that is done once and multiple groups can use it, right? So that, that certainly makes sense to me. So just to, to be clear, the, the course of study that was in the email actually came from Dan, not from me.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This is FYI, not that it matters that much, but I didn't pick him up, Dan.
Okay.
So, but I, anyway, let's, you have an agenda, is there more that you wanna, do you wanna go beyond this and then circle back to it, or are you looking for more feedback?
I would, well, we can, we can circle back if you want, but ultimately I would like some direction on which format, and maybe you need to chew on it until our end of the, like, our last, you know, real board meeting, whatever, what am I trying to say, two weeks from now?
Yep.
And that would be fine with me, do you know what I mean? But, but part of my question is, are you looking for materials and resources? What level of detail do you want? That's also, as you have that conversation amongst yourselves, that's gonna dictate a little bit on which template you choose, because you, because if you want down to, you know what I mean, articles and things like that, then, then that is, well, look, you could use either one or five, but there were some that would be appropriate, because they don't go to that level of detail.
So just, this is a marker on the table, and I haven't gone through all of them, but, but two seem to be pretty easy for me to read, and comprehend what's going on. I don't know if two would be a version that would be universal, if it's more focused on what the community would, you know, would be more valuable to the community rather than to the teachers as well.
I can, what I like about two, so funny, is the space, like, I don't know, the boxes, the little boxes.
It's, it's easy for me to.
Okay, so look at it, fill in, are you okay with it, fill in?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
This, this really, I mean, this, this speaks to me, but not to say that others couldn't work for me as well, but that, I mean, this just, it seems pretty straightforward, and, and the, what I don't like about the smaller spreadsheets is it's busy, it's so busy, yeah.
Alright, what's, what's interesting is this is how, like, we evaluate proposals, for example, is this type of a, this type of a format, right? And, and, like, this, this. Well, I think what's probably, right, how it's set up visually is one thing, but the columns, like, are the right things in there? Are the right things in there? Is this, they have different, well, standards, I think that's why I like these. Activities taught, materials, resources?
So they're kind of the same thing, which is different wording, right?
This one doesn't, this one doesn't help me flow from one section to another, whereas these columns, like, succinctly say, this goes, but this goes, but this, this is a row.
So was this one of you?
So, can I, can I suggest something with Ms. Gracy?
It's my accounting person, I can't help it.
I know, the accountant, the accountant goes that way, but a lot of people don't think that way.
What I, yeah, no, so here's what I was gonna say, and this is what, this is kind of speaks to what Linda is saying, with this document, and I don't have a problem with this, is you can't connect what material is connected to what standard. So as long as you're okay with the idea that comprehensively, this is how we're going to present it, but you don't know, when you look at this, if I'm teaching cite strong and thorough textual evidence to support that first learning standard, you don't know, A, what activities I'm doing to teach that, or exactly what material is I using. You just know when I teach this whole thing. And I'm okay with that, I don't care, but that's just a different way to look at it.
That, with that, for me, is very hard to review and say, like, as a board member, I would understand that you're correlating this activity with this standard, and you're using that activity for that standard, but you may not use that activity for something else, because it certainly wouldn't match, right? Like, this just helps me, this is for me workflow-wise, it just helps me, we meet this standard by doing this, this is how we assess it, this is what we do, this is like, and if the column's blank, then, then it's not applicable, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, I see what you're saying, because it is, it is, it's all there, but it's not necessarily cross, it's not broken down by, by learning objective, and, and that does not necessarily convey what's, what's being taught in an easy-to-understand manner. I did like the, I mean, it's just more open, it's less cluttered, it's, it's, on one level, it's easier to read, but I certainly get that it is not, you know, there's more information and it's tied together better in the, in the older spreadsheets.
So, my input on that, to the one Ms. Gracy likes, is the activities, to me, would be more of a detailed column, and it, and it seems, it seems like an overview without much detail. So, my personal preference would be, this format might be more than fine, it's just if we could add something that would show more of the details in the activities of what is being taught. Students create a flipbook that, that retells the story, summarizes the story, key ideas and details, okay, but what are, what are, what are they doing, what resources are being used, and, so, I would just, for me, I would like to have a little bit more detail, if I picked something up and I really don't know what's going on in the school, maybe I could get some details to see rather than an overview, what's, what's underneath the blank, and so to speak. That's just my thinking, I don't know, that's.
So then that column, yeah, that column of resources and links, does that drill down enough for you, Scott, or do you, are you thinking that that is also, because, to me, that's what that column would be, is that that would be that drill down that you're talking about. So when you're, when you're teaching, retelling a story, or summarizing, this is the website we use, this is the, the material that we use to teach that. And I'm thinking some of these are live links, I would make them live links, you know, if we're gonna put it on the website, they'd be live links.
Well, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, for a layperson to click on a live link and see something that probably speaks volumes, than, than trying to read a spreadsheet, which some people are good at.
Yeah, well, it would, I mean, at least would lay it out, but then if you wanted to drill down and you wanted to see, well, what does Brads' kids look like, you know what I mean, what does that website look like? What are the units of study, you know, when they're doing this particular area, what does that look like? That would be all right here for someone to access.
So, Dr. Malacker, if we look at number one and then number five, the one that you kind of said you like, it would be really your topic, for instance, would be key ideas and, key ideas and details, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at number one, where you, at the top of your example, your topic is key ideas and details, correct? So that would go in that topic on number five?
So, so you're gonna look at this one a little bit, so, I want you to look at the actual example, the sixth-grade math example that came with this. So the topic is actually using positive rational numbers.
Right.
And then what the sixth-grade teachers did is they put the, the standards in there under module objectives, so that's, so you get the general overview of what we're teaching, rational numbers. Here are the standards that apply to that unit, because they think in terms of units, teachers think in terms of units, they don't think in terms necessarily of standards, they think of, if I'm a kindergartner, I'm doing, a kindergarten teacher, I'm doing my fall apple harvest unit, like, that's gonna be my unit, and then they say, these are the standards that fit in that unit, here are, you know what I mean? And so, what activities are we gonna do? We're gonna make applesauce, we're going to read a book, we're going to, you know what I mean, we're gonna go to parrishings, you know, we're gonna do, what discussions are we gonna have? Well, we're probably gonna talk about how seeds grow, we're going to, you know what I mean, we're gonna talk about how to, because we're going to make applesauce, so that goes in the activity section, you know, discussions, and then what books are we actually gonna use? So that's how you would maybe look at the number five a little bit differently, so you're gonna see comprehensively how we're teaching something, like, as, so, so as a parent or a community member, if you want to know how they're teaching World War II, you're gonna see World War II in your topic, and then you're gonna see the breakdown of what that unit looks like for a student in that class. You're gonna see the alignment to the standards, you're gonna see the resources that we use, the inputs, and then you're gonna see what we expect kids to produce, which is, could be an assessment, you know, it could be a project, could be something like that, that's their output. What technology are we using? You know, are we introducing them to something that's different? Are we using just the Chromebooks? Are we accessing other technology, videos, things like that, that would be applicable to that unit? Here, you're seeing, okay.
So this, this is, this is in standard number order, whereas this is in unit-based, and could cover multiple different types of standards, and I think that's what we need to figure out, how do we want to look at it? This, to me, says, are we teaching every single standard? It will tell me that. This, I'm gonna have to go back and cross-reference, because I'm not sure, because we're, we're touching multiple, so for me, it's like.
Well, is there a way that we could do like a cross-reference table or something?
Well, let me ask, ask this question, do the standardized tests, if the scores are meeting, and does that then say we're teaching to the standards?
I, I don't know, all I know is that we then did that, the curriculum audit, and people said, we don't, like, we sometimes don't hit all the standards. Well, I'd love to see that, right? And I think this, this would lend itself more to it, although this is really important, and I think is good for teachers to be able to develop as far as what their units look like, like, that's important.
That's almost like planning.
Right, but this, like, for a parent to, to take that state standards book, because I remember getting those before, before my kids even started school, we got those in preschool, they gave them to us, like, this is what you'll learn, right? And, and, I didn't know what they meant back then. But this, for me, says, we're covering everything.
Well, there you go, right? So you didn't know what they meant, so you had a little more info, so the layperson could comprehend, understand it, right?
But this tells me we're teaching it all, this would lay it out, whereas like, if I use this, I would have to go back and like, okay, this checks off, right, and, oh, this one, we did it again, like.
I would think that we would be providing this to you personally, we have to, although I only would.
So this is, and again, I'm open to, to, you know, further discussion. So I think number two, I get why that's probably not our best option, certainly at this point it probably is not ever, but in comparing number one to number five, I do think, the one thing that does resonate to me is that this, if I'm interpreting correctly, this would correlate with your school year better. And so that, that, that's useful, but if we had a cross-reference, you know, here's, you know, standard to Mrs. Gracy's point, here's, you know, where do I find standard one for US history? There could be, you know, that'd be harder, I mean, I get that's an added layer of complication, but that might be another way of having the best of both worlds.
Like, we've hit this one seventeen times, and we only hit this one three.
Correct.
Or none, right, like.
Right, but that, but that's not a bad thing for us to dive into as teachers, do you know what I mean, and provide you with that information, so.
We wanna be sure we're covering all of it.
This is a good place to start, and then maybe, so this isn't gonna look, doesn't need to look, if I have this, this doesn't necessarily need to look like this anymore, because I've already got the activities, I've got, so, we're starting to look at this being more of a standard unit, you know what I mean, when taught kind of thing, so that we are making sure that we're covering all the standards we need to. This is where it's gonna tell you activities, resources, things like that, so you would have both options.
Right, and if, and if one, I mean, if you can do a pivot table or something.
Oh, I was gonna say that, but everybody would've gotten mad at me, Tom.
Well, I did it for you, so.
Thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Here's.
Which I don't know how to make a pivot table, but I know they exist.
I do, it's where it does.
But, but if, but that might be a, you know, I think the one in your left hand is.
Number five.
Number five, is, if I'm a, if I'm a, if I'm a parent, and I wanna look at what's going on chronologically, that, that's gonna be more useful to me than, than the standards listed A through Z, when, when they're not necessarily chronologically tied to what you're doing.
Correct.
So.
I agree with that. You just have a column with the standard.
So, wow. So, well, let's see if we have general consensus. So could I start with this, knowing that we're going to eventually, this might be the piece of how we review this. Do you see what I'm saying? So this is where we start, we now have this accessible to parents, community members, obviously you're going to approve it. But then this becomes how you guys, every, whatever our cycle's gonna be, we complete this, tweak this, complete this, and then this is how you know.
We're covering it.
We're covering it.
Sounds good, just so we are doing our due diligence, let's just talk about three and four, just why, why, you know, why you don't, I mean, a little bit more complicated, but can you just kinda?
No, so three and four, again, go ahead.
Just interject, can I ask, you know, where these samples came from?
Sure, so this one is the one that, number one is the one that Dan provided.
Okay.
Okay, um, number two is from an area school. So I went on and just looked at what other schools were doing, okay?
Can't say who.
Well, I would prefer not to, I mean, there's, so it's from an area school. Um, three and four were just two that I Googled, just looking for different formats, to be honest with you, to see.
Were they in Ohio or were they elsewhere?
These two, I don't even know, to be honest with you, I don't know where these two.
One's on here, I don't know if that NC twelve report proposal application.
One, oh, one is Delaware. Actually, this one, the finance, the number four is Delaware, because if you look at what, it says Delaware Personal Finance Standards, so, okay. Um, again, I was really more looking for formatting, you know, just additional formatting ways to show you. The reason I don't like three and four is the same reason I was not particularly fond of two. It's just very, the information seems to really destroy it to me. So as a parent, I think, or a community member, if you wanted to see what your kids are doing, like, in this particular unit, although they're set by unit, it's just, I don't know, I just didn't think it was laid out as well. But that doesn't mean that you will think that, that's just was my personal opinion. That's why we're doing this as.
So number, number three is, is busier and it's not a uniform way of looking at it, right? So the other two that we're looking at are left and right, it's consistent, it's by row, and this is, this is, you're jumping around with your eye to absorb all the information, which makes it a little bit harder to ascertain what's being said. And then, maybe what's, what's four?
I think being four provide a little bit less information too, if it looks that way.
More of an overview? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And six just looks like it has.
Six was, six I actually pulled because it's the pre-AP format. And it's, so it's a standardized format and I just gave it as an option. This is how we get the curriculum from pre-AP and we input that the teachers build how they're gonna teach it, but it's pretty prescribed. So it just, again, was another format, um, little bit more of pacing, you know, teachers, the, the pre-AP number six has the pacing, you know, teachers kind of plan out how many periods are we gonna use or how many, you know, classes, classes. You put the learning objectives in there, you put the state standard alignment. So this one would be a little bit different because pre-AP has their own learning objectives. So we would just have a state standard, um, column. The reflection area would not be on there, because that, they have teachers that go back, they reflect on each unit and then go back every year and kind of redo, you know, how they're doing things.
So if, if, if number six was pursued, I mean, there's a lot of codes in there, right? So I'm assuming that if we pursued this, we'd actually have verbiage in there, not, not necessarily just codes.
So that's something we need to talk about. If, if you are wanting every, every standard typed into these documents.
That's a lot.
It is, A, it's a lot, and B, it's a lot of time that I don't think it's time for, to well-studied teachers. I mean, that's clearly clerical work to type out standards.
And the standards are, you already, we already have the stand, you can get the standards.
Okay, but, but, but just, and I, I get what you're saying, so actually, learning objectives would be an AP requirement and the state, state, state standards, I guess would be an AP requirement as well or something?
No, so the state standards, those are aligned to us, so RL means reading literature, and those would be the standards that coincide with the reading literature standards. And then you have to go to the state document to look at that.
The codes would be indecipherable to, to a layperson.
So you're not wanting a link in there, you're wanting every standard.
Oh, no, oh, no, I, 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 right, the link would be much easier.
No, 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 I, yeah, sorry.
Right, if you had the, if you had the RL and, and there was a link to each of those, that'd be much easier to do, I mean, you're not gonna write it all out.
Well, I, I mean, like, RL is, is, you said, reading literature? Instead of some RL, reading literature, so that, that might be, not to have the standard there, but to spell out what the acronym is, so that people have more of a reference.
I'm with you, I'm thinking that with each one, maybe there's a header that says, you know what I mean, they give the key, essentially.
This, this is indecipherable.
Yes, to, to me, yes, I get it, yeah, I, I can appreciate what you're saying. Um, but, but that was gonna be one of my questions, is what do you want in the state standard boxes? Because the teachers are just gonna put their, you know, NS in math is number sense. Now, I know a layperson doesn't understand that. My thought was to provide that within, at, you know, like, either as a header or whatever, so that you know what it means, but then provide the link to third grade math standards. So if you wanna know what NS three point four is, you can look at what that standard is.
I, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Not, not like to make it overcomplicated, but, but NS is not gonna mean anything to anybody who's not in education.
I agree with that, so, yes, I would make sure that we, that, that you knew where to go, you A, knew what those acronyms meant, and B, knew where to go if you were wanting to dig down into what exactly the standard was.
Okay, have you looked more closely at three, four and six? I'm not so interested, so, personally. So I think it is, is back to, to.
One and five?
One and five would be our, our, our best bets. And, and with five being the one that, that would be public facing, would be easiest to read from my perspective, and then if number one is, is more applicable to, you know, the teaching staff, then a pivot table or whatever we talked about might be a, a solution to accounting both needs with one set of data, just reformatting it basically.
And also, what was mentioned, maybe, is it possible one would be a tool that the board would be able to use from time to time, whenever that timeframe is, to do an overview as to the performance? Is that what you were saying before, that, or someone was saying it could be used for that?
I think that it would allow you, as we now get into a cycle of review, to be able to say, okay, when we look at number one, when we look at that chart, we can, we can see all the standards laid out and we can see, yes, this is one we're teaching them, how many times we hit them. So for example, in language arts, clearly you're going to see summarizing. Language arts is a very cyclical curriculum, you know what I mean? You will see it multiple times throughout the year. Math, you teach fractions, you're probably teaching fractions, yeah.
You're always progressing, you're probably next to the next math class.
So it, it, it will look a little bit differently, but it will allow you to at least be able to see the standards laid out and when we're teaching them and to what degree. Which leads us back to the audit, which is what we wanted them to focus on.
That's what I was thinking too, that would help in that regard, the idea of teachers thinking they're teaching it, they're not teaching it, I mean, we'd have to dig pretty deep to get there, but it would help bring all of that together.
Right, so, so, and I think this is where you're headed, I mean, certainly what sparked my head as you were speaking, is, is we get the, the results back and we say, oh, we're, we're not doing so well here, we can take the standard and go into here and say, well, how do, how do we, how do we address that issue? To, to, you know, so that we can maximize our potential.
Make a game plan.
Yeah.
So if what I'm hearing is correct, we're gonna start with five. We're gonna work towards one eventually, but we're gonna start with five.
So definitely start with five.
You look skeptical.
Well, like, definitely start with five, from a perspective, definitely start with five, but I don't know if we wanna work towards this, I think we need to, to, my, my thought is that this, this, this is an outcome of this.
They add us completely.
Through the pivot table, are you familiar with pivot tables?
She'll never tell us. She's currently taking them.
Okay, so I don't.
No, I'm an English major on that.
Yeah, okay, so, so what a, what a pivot table is, is.
I know, I do not understand the concept, don't get me wrong.
Okay, so, so my, my, my point is, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
There you go.
I know.
My, my, my point is, if this, to, to me, this is, this is, this would be useful to the public that we serve, right? This, number one, is more useful to the, to the staff. Is there a way to kill two birds with one stone through using a pivot table of some sort, such that basically this information's available, but a, if I click on a button, this, this information is available as well?
Yeah, I guess what I said, so, so I will tell you that I believe number five can probably be done by every subject area course we have in the district by the end of the year. So here's what I'll tell you, this goes back to the statement I made at the beginning of the meeting, where it exists, you know, the teachers do this kind of stuff, all the, this is how they work.
So we're, we're teaching students, we've been doing it for seventy-five years, the elements are here, right?
Yes, so number, so how I would like to do it, because, and I know what Dan talked about, and I have sat on, years ago when I was a teacher, I did, sat on probably that nineteen ninety-nine course of study team that Chuck taught me about. And we would get groups of four or five teachers together and we would sit down for three days and we would hash out what the year looks like in sixth grade language art. I remember doing it in La Booth libraries. We don't need to do that, because teachers do that all the time now. They already know, like, this, this sixth grade, the entire sixth grade year is already done in math, because they are so cohesive of a team. So my thought would be to go to, we have department heads, we, I have PLC leads that we call them at the middle school, which we, each grade level, subject area.
It's PLC.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, professional learning community, okay? And then we have TBT, which are teacher-based teams, they all do the same thing, they're, they're grade level, subject area teams, we just call them different things.
Okay.
It's also one of my pet peeves.
Obviously, then maybe, I'm used to aggregates.
Yes, so, um, so they all, every grade level and subject area has a, a lead, okay? My thought is to go to that lead and say to them, either, and I haven't completely worked it out, of course, I haven't ran this one by Gary, but whether it's, I say, I'll pay you three or four hours, you know what I mean, let's come up with a standard amount of time you think it's gonna take to do this for your subject area, you get the framework together and then take it to your team and let the team go through and make sure it's accurate. Rather than starting from scratch and trying to get the teachers to build it, I'd like to give them what I know they already are cohesive on. Let them tweak it, make sure the activities are there, the materials, the resources, that kind of thing. Then it comes to you. Number five, I really believe, I would say for probably ninety percent of our courses. I mean, I already have the template done, I have, we typed out every class, every grade level, every subject area, so we contract the teacher in charge, the date it was submitted, the date it was reviewed by the, the team, and then the day the board approved it. So number five can be done, I think, by the end of the year. Then my thought was, and this kind of just has evolved since number one is going to be our, kind of our checkpoint, as it were, you know, for you guys to look at and say, so you're gonna approve number five for everything.
Right.
But then next year, we start on number one and we start to lay out the number one documents. I don't think both of them can be done before the end of the year.
Okay, gotcha, but I, now I, I think I better understand what you're, you're saying. So, so number one is our, gives us the ability to, to make sure that we've covered A to Z in the standards. This, again, is, is more useful to the public, and, and parents in particular, as to what's going on. And then it's just a matter of trying to figure out the most efficient way to maintain both, so that they're consistent and it doesn't, there's not double entry, if possible.
How can we wrap the curriculum audit into, because I, I can, like, there's so many ways and options for that. I think it's really helpful that we had it done already, so now we have that data.
So the curriculum audit, they already have looked at where, so, so the piece of that, when they do number five, when they do this, the, the module piece, they're gonna, I will have them do as a piece, which isn't necessarily a public or a board piece, but to have them go back and say, okay, you identified these particular standards as either ones we need to teach completely or we're not teaching enough. Now let's look at how, and that would be when the team is reviewing it, I would, that's when they would be, should be saying, hey, we said we were gonna do this, either we've, they've already done it and the document reflects it already, or they're going to say, we need to include this in the document because we have seen this as a weak area based on our, and based on our data. That's the other thing, twenty-three years ago, we didn't look at data like we do now. And so they're gonna know, when they lay this out, they're gonna say, we've already beefed up these areas because we know historically we're not strong in, you know, decimals, or, you know what I mean? Or that kind of thing, so they should be, and if they haven't yet, this is certainly a good reminder and focus for them, so it serves multiple purposes. I think this is a really good process, I don't, you know, thank you for not trash-talking me. I was, because we haven't done it in so long, but I, I'm not even sure that I knew that we were supposed to, but comprehensively, when you look at it and what we've done with the curriculum audit, how teachers work together, how we dive into data, we've talked about that at the programs meeting, this really brings it all together for that purpose.
That might help us also, you know, what it, about my thoughts about what fifth, sixth, seventh grade man, this, this would help identify where there might be a weakness and help with, what we were talking about, maybe a game plan to help improve that. Um, I know you're still, you said you're still working on a, another year's work to get some more information, right, that we'll have at the end of this school year in regards to what the teachers are doing and what they're actually teaching and performing?
Yes, I mean, they have changed what they're doing and changed their focus based on the data we have. We won't know anything till we do, do the next one testing, so.
You really think this would be done by June? At the end of the school year, that's only a couple months from now.
Did you say school year or calendar year?
Did you mean school year, yeah, you did.
Okay, I thought I heard calendar year.
I don't know, I don't, I'm trying to answer, I'm trying to ascertain what you, like, what do you, right. I don't think, I don't think a two-year process is a bad thing, I think, like, it's thoughtful and whatever, I just wanted.
So here, so here's what, I guess what you need to understand, the sixth grade one's already done. And they did that in an afternoon, you know, only because they, it's not, we're not starting from scratch. So it's really just.
It's really, it's, it's, it's cutting and pasting information into Excel cells, right?
It is, so it, so it's not as, what may become labor-intensive is this, is number one, as we start to drill down to where is each standard, how often are we covering it, you know what I mean, and how deeply. That may be something that comes a little bit slower next year, but I think we can have these comprehensive spoken sequences on, I do.
Yeah, so if, if the one thing's done by the end of this year and the other one's done by the end of next year, we, we have set ourselves up for success, because now we have the template. And then it gets a little bit easier if we're on a, by every two-year cycle, annual looking at it, then it would, it would make it easier for everybody, no matter who's sitting up here. Because other people.
Or here, as it turns.
Right, you know, wherever there might be new people, they have to be able to come in and, and look and say, okay, this makes sense to me, I can work with it. Um, I, I think that sounds good, again, part of my goal coming in, it's just a personal thing, is wanting to make Riverside the gold standard, I, I think this brings us up another level and, and gets closer to that.
You were being so painful.
Huh?
I wasn't so painful.
Oh, I didn't think it was going to be, I, 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 I mean, once I kind of wrapped my head around what I thought you wanted, or, you know what I mean, and then just, just some of the direction that I needed from you, it wasn't, no.
I mean, locally, you already have the mindset of everything that's here anyway, right? It's just a matter of organizing it and putting it on paper.
That's exactly, that's why I think the process isn't going to take as long, maybe as Dan has seen it take in the past, because we're not starting from scratch. It seems like it, because we didn't have the document, but it's all there, it's just getting it into.
And the other thing is working together, not, people don't always work together, right? It's much easier to get it done, right?
You have everything you need from us, you think?
I think so, wait, let me check my.
So I did.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, there's, I mean, other, the other point, I mean, Dan did put some points on how to develop and revise the course of study, which was, which I thought was pretty useful, but it looks like there's pretty similar to, yeah, I, I think we should utilize the, I forget who, your part.